Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday. It says Monday, but it's not. It is Tuesday, December 20th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. And I have a forum. Unfortunately, both Craig and Sean are unable to join us this evening. But nevertheless, we do have a full forum. So I don't know of any changes from the first business meeting agenda. If there's any changes. You've all received Jim's meeting notes. Have you had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Did I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Correct? Action, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, extensions. And you've all received the draft December 5th minutes. Any corrections, additions? I will be accepting. Thank you, Edna. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Delise. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, extension, motion of interest. We have received what we need to be able to revisit the Scott Lyons application of Trump. And so we are looking for a motion to reschedule the public hearing for February 6th. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, extensions. Lastly, before we move into new applications, I want to extend my personal thanks, and I think the thanks of everybody at the board, to Joe Valia for his service on the board. We are going to miss you. We're happy that, you know, now that you're COVID, your businesses, we're just booming again. But we have enjoyed working with you. Don't hesitate to look at us again in the future if openings open up and your time becomes free, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me draw my term on the board.
New applications. First up this evening is Philip Williams Jr., Stone Church Road, minor lot subdivision, July line, tax back partial estate. Who is going to present? What would like to introduce yourself? And then tell us what you are proposing.
Phil Williams, Senior. And I'm representing Mr. Zeitz and my son. But he's here. If you want to ask him anything, press.
Okay.
We purchased this property off of Ronnie Zeitz about four years ago, like there. Three or four years ago. And at the time, Mr. Zeitz didn't want to sell us any more property than what we needed to be able to build a home on. So that was five acres. Now we're getting to the point where we're ready to start construction on a home. We're break ground. And we went and approached Ronnie, Mr. Zeitz, about getting some more because where the property line is now and the slop, to maintain 50 foot setback, we got to build over the edge of the slop down into the hill. So we'd like to actually build about where the property line is now. So we approached Mr. Zeitz about getting more property. We took him to the right up there. And he said he would be willing to sell us more. So what we're trying to do is move the property line so that we just have the other backyard. And that's about it. Right now, the house would have to sit right about here. 50 foot off of this back line. So now we really want to set the house right about, right about here. So the property line that's existing would go through the center. And then we would have this buffer of a backyard and so on and so forth. If we could have purchased that at the time, we would have done that at the time. But he didn't. He wanted to sell my son enough property to build a house on. And that's what he did. So now he's, it's a little nicer.
Okay. Jim, comments?
Yeah, I don't have any issues with the proposal for the subdivision. The only request that I would make that I think we have to do is, you did get approval from County Health for your septic and all that kind of stuff. I think you need to go back and just confirm with them that there aren't any issues since you were rebuilding the house. For keeping the septic field anywhere it is, but assuming that the pipes and things will move, just maybe make sure that county's okay with any of those changes.
No problem.
And I don't see any issues with adding land to the five acres.
It's moving the house further up the hill.
Right.
And so there would be more of a pitch for the, for the septic system. We could, it's a very good question because it could require a drop box or something like that. So I will basically go to my engineer and ask him if there's anything that needs to change.
I think we need to make sure the county, before I'll tell you more typically acts, to make sure the county is okay with the, with the sound. That's the only thing I'm trying to do.
Planning Board members? Looks like a good plan. Okay. How proceed? Soon you have a procedural resolution.
Aye. Draft procedural resolution for the board's consideration tonight for minor subdivision line adjustment. The application by Phil Williams Jr. for minor subdivision in the RC 5 zoning district. Accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for review, further review by the planning board to advise the public. Classifying the proposed actions are listed in the speaker, which coordinate our quality of view as concluded. Taking a public hearing, January 17th. January 17th at 6:15 PM. I'm directing the town board clerk to notice important requirements of support from town code, but also general municipal law section 239 N.N. Making sure we notify the town clerk if we are on the town line. I know the town clerk and not the board. Send this to the town CEB for their review. And we need to tell the planning board members to respect that.
I'll go. We'd like to go with Delise.
I will go with Delise.
Uh, may I have a motion?
Remove.
If you may, go second, please. Delise, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, extension, motion of interest. We have a few minutes before 6:15 when we can begin public hearings. The only thing I would add that I didn't say earlier is obviously. Okay. Yeah, Delise and Edna will be in touch with you to sign up the site visit. Actually, probably your email address is on the contact information. And so they'll be in touch with you before January 17th.
I had one question. Which number is it that you learned to say something about no finding Red Hook?
Because it's the Jason two, the Red Hook.
Oh, it's a Jason two.
You're within 500 feet of town lines. So we have to legally notify the town of Red Hook on the site visit.
I'll do that. Just send them.
Yeah, it's not, it's not in Red Hook. It's just.
No. So they need to know. Just as we have to notify neighbors that within 500 feet, Red Hook in this case is the nigger.
They got it.
She has an impression she knows, you know, make sure the government's thinking this is done in accordance with the town code, but also make sure that we notify the county. Make sure the county.
And we'll be in touch with you.
Thank you very much. Me and my family are finished.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Except for wishing you were happy, all right?
Thank you.
As I was going to say, with Joe's leave day, he still will have a vacant seat on the planning board. So those of you who have ideas or have any questions, you can let me know. But we will be starting in the year with only six members of the planning board. So looking ahead, that will mean that attendance is always, and it's always important, but it becomes even more important if we're with the other vacant seats. So if we know of something coming up soon, you can let us know. It better that, I think. All right, we have a few minutes to write.
Can I ask the continuation of the rules?
I can do that. So we have a request from Markman Stevens, who is the representative for both Nadine Aruza and for the signed permit to continue both of those public hearings. Do we have to wait until 6:15 to actually vote on the dates of those?
Well, we'll have to open the case in which to speak tonight.
Yeah.
Could you announce the continuation, maybe once this, you know?
I think we have to wait until 6:15. We have only four minutes.
If I have a question, may I ask a question? Is the Nadine orders, that opening noise to open the meeting, we still, you know, what, we still, we could talk about that today?
Yes.
Thank you.
This one has a question. Jim is asking me to announce that the two January meetings that are coming up are going to fall on unusual days for us. Normally, our meetings are on Mondays. First meeting in January is going to be Wednesday, January 4th. That is being pushed back, obviously, because the second is the holiday. The third is the town board organizational meeting. And so that kicks us back to Wednesday. And then the second one is the, because of Washington, the president's birthday, will be occurring on Tuesday, January 17th because of that other holiday. So we will be posting, obviously, on the planning board portion of the website. But we need to alter it in our calendars as well because it's easy to fall back on to thinking it's going to be Tuesday. All right, I think we are close enough to 6:15 to move into the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda. The first public hearing that we will entertain is Catherine Witten, 16 Old Coast Road, site plan review of proposed single-family dwelling. There you go.
Presenting the plan with some revised dimensions. When I went to the planning board, it became clear that.
I think you need to speak in the microphone.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Some of the dimensions had to change because we were following our application to the planning board with the location of the house, not their review and what they granted. So there was some confusion. So we redid the dimensions to match what they had granted and re-presented the plan. And can you just go to the setback plan on the next page? The date at the top is four in the middle because we present, we re-submitted more recently than August. But I'll read out the variances we're looking for. The 94 foot, seven inches on the front yard setback. Where we have 150 feet required and 55 foot, five inches proposed. And then on the north side, we are proposing 21 foot, two and a half inches. So that's a 78 foot, nine and a half inch variance because 100 feet is required on each side yard. On the south side, we're proposing 27 foot, three setback, meaning a variance of 72 foot, nine. And then the area variance hasn't changed. The total coverage we're asking for is 1770.75 square feet. That includes the garage. And we're allowed 1163 square feet as of right. Another change that we did is we realized from the revised septic drawings that our new fence was going to cross very slightly over the wetlands boundary. I think it's further back in the submission. This is the old submission. Maybe I have a hard copy. So right here is the wetlands buffer. And we were putting the fence along here. So on the new submission, to avoid getting a special use permit, we are proposing we change the plantings in that wetlands area. Uh, thank you. Thanks. So we're going to do the fence to provide privacy for this neighbor here. But once we get up to in line with the back of the house, we would just change to plantings to avoid building a fence on the wetland. And the current status of the new septic drawings as they've been submitted to the board of health and we're waiting for the final approval.
And what is your schedule with the ZBA?
I'm reading them tomorrow night.
And is this the first new meeting?
Yeah, it's not the public hearing yet. They're going to look at the new dimensions and then hopefully go to public hearing after that.
So that would be at least among.
At least 123 or 13.
Right. Okay. Just give it another, Jim, do you have any comments you want?
Well, the only thing anyone that Catherine touched on is that the fence appears to go into the wetland buffer. But the water line also does as well.
No, we got, we changed it so the fence wouldn't cross.
Oh, you took that, okay. I'm sorry, I missed that one through the files. No, I mean, otherwise, I think, has the lighting been addressed?
Yeah, we have the lighting tracks. So this would be near the front door and it would chime down. And then at the garage, we were going to use this style and have that chime down on me as well.
Planning Board members?
I guess the only question I had is, as you just said, you're still before the health department. They're still reviewing the septic. I know it's fairly significant. Each field that we're putting in, fill section, some it's a different fill section.
We went through a round of review already and we resubmitted based on all the comments. So it should be fairly soon.
Thank you.
So what has to happen with the ZBA before they are able to approve?
She will appear before them tomorrow. Have they accepted?
No.
This is the first.
This is the first. So they will accept her application and they will then.
Schedule their own site visit?
Yeah, and public hearing.
And public hearing. Typically, so we not hear back from them until the month after tomorrow, whatever the next date is. And then typically, they assign then, if they're ready to go, have they assigned someone from the ZBA to write their resolution? So we're looking at two months.
So we would have the opportunity to have a more complete presentation with the new material on the screen, right? And by that time, we should have some understanding of what the ZBA is going to do. So from the point of view of a public hearing, this could be a more complete presentation.
Normally, I mean, if you're asking her to come back and do a more fulsome presentation with the new material, which Jim, I think, is saying he's found.
I'm following.
Does this look like it, Catherine?
Um, that certainly can't tell, but the. That does not it.
That one's dated 10/13.
No, we submitted on December 5th.
So then are you suggesting she come back in January to the presentation again? Or wait until when we normally schedule it for February?
Just as long as there is a more complete presentation of what's going to happen. It will never be in a great time.
It's our January meeting looking forward?
Yeah.
What question do you have?
Chicken. All right. So then if there are no other questions or comments from planning board members, I think we're looking at scheduling the public hearing for the meeting, the second meeting in February.
On 1st.
February 21st. May I have a motion that I have?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. My thought, and Delise follows in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Okay. Can I just double check with Gretchen and make sure that all the updated information was available so we can hand out to planning board members as soon as possible? Jim says he doesn't recall seeing.
Also, I'm worried about tomorrow night now because it's submitted everything the same day.
The 1st one.
Did you ever find it?
But I'm given, so I guess typically we wouldn't move on an application without hearing from the county health department or potential ZBA anyway. So I mean, those are still two of the main issues here. But I did find the.
Okay. So we have the information, we'll just.
It is, it is.
It was all with the variance.
Okay.
This was not right.
All right, well, we'll ensure that it gets out to planning board members. So we'll have it well in advance. And then we'll see you then on the 21st of February. Hope that the health department has turned around their review and you're in a good position with the ZBA.
Okay, thank you.
I'm pretty sure I sent it out, but it was under the area variance. So it.
Okay. Okay. So now, anyone, okay, anyone from the public here wishing to speak before we move on? The next public hearing is Nadine Aruza, Lower African Partners, Lower African Grove, site plan and special use permit to construct a single-family dwelling. As I announced earlier, we have a request from Mr. Blominsky, who's representing Mr. Rogers, to continue the public hearing until January 17th. However, as Jim, planning board members, do you have any comments at this time?
Just one correction. These special use permits sometimes for the garage accessory structure, or the cabinet door, we can put the same thing, well, that is not a, a sub.
So the agenda needs to be corrected to construct.
Yeah, they spread the garage and put a sort of, the one person on station. So they're doing more follow.
All right, let the record show that we corrected that, both in the agenda and for the public. Jerem, others, anything before I open it to public comment?
No, my comments pretty much are made for me to hear from the ZBA at this point. I think the other comments are something to discuss.
All right. Can I open it up to public comment? If anyone comes up and gives your name, I'm happy to hear from you.
Hi, my name is Doug White, and I live on beautiful downtown Acro Grove, 624 Acro Grove, 65 years consecutive board. And properly, currently, I've been 20 years consecutive board. So this is, on this Aruza application, so me, Mr. Aruza and I, we have an agreement for landscaping, screening, every green trees. And this will be incorporated into the record of planning boards in the ZBA by conditions of final site plan approval. So that's how I understand it. So I just want to double check here with everybody. So tomorrow is the site plan, is the ZBA meeting. So here's my question. Who does the final site plan approval? The ZBA does that work?
No, the planning board does the final site plan approval.
Okay. So, so I want to make sure that you guys have this and we're all, do you have this? Do you have this agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And this. We received it.
And so we both agree on it. So that will be condition of the final site plan approval.
That's my understanding.
Okay. I'll need to double check that.
Yeah, if the board is okay with, with that there is an agreement occurs between the line numbers, so we can certainly accept that as a, as part of the application and process. We could put it into the resolution.
Okay.
And then my next question is, who, who, who will enforce this initially? And then after the fact, who?
The zoning enforcement office.
And zoning enforcement officers. And they work for both the ZBA and the planning board?
The zoning enforcement office forces any zoning violations to ensure regulations are followed. So let's say if they built too close, didn't follow the setback that was approved by the ZBA. And then that would be a violation of the building's constitution. And that would be something that would be a violation of that address. For example, if the trees weren't planted as part of the site plan approval, then that becomes a violation as well until that's corrected. That violation stays. They cannot, they can end up in court for the county justice to decide how to deal with that issue. Yes, that's what the zoning enforcement, the responsibility is supposed to enforce. Any and all of these by the planning board, the ZBA, anything like that, that's why.
Once Mr. Aruza is through the zoning board and receives site plan approval from us, then he signs, I sign as the chair of the site plan. At that point, we have done the planning boards through their process. He then goes before the building department to get a building permit to construct the garage. And proceeding, he should proceed to then honor the agreement that you have. The planning board does not monitor those conditions. The, nor more is their enforcement capability at the time. So should he violate, we would be relying on you or others. So, should he violate, we would be relying on you or others that would notice that to report it.
Very good.
It's not a matter of policing.
Report to the zoning.
Reporting to the zoning administrator, not that to the planning board. So, we're not, we're not, the planning board is not in the position of policing what's approved. But any violations of the code get reported to the zoning administrator, and he follows up, he or she.
Okay. So, so going forward, on basically what I said, we have the agreement, everything will go good, right?
I think so.
We'll probably have another meeting next month or something.
Well, we're gonna, I think they've asked to have the public hearing continued until the 17th of January. And at that point, Jim will have presumably an approval resolution. And the approval resolution will include the condition that you're speaking about.
Very good. So, good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, we're all set, right?
I hope so.
Thanks for having us.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak to Mr. Aruiz's application? All right. Who'd I get? Have a motion to continue the public hearing to January 17 at 6:15. Thanks, Edna Seggs. Thank you, Michael. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extensions. Next up is Ricky, 37189G, signed permit and site plan amendment. This too is an application that is currently tied up with his own board of appeals. And it's my understanding with Gretchen that they have continued it to an undetermined date and time. Is that correct, Special? So, I think we'll discuss ourselves continuing it to an undetermined, to an undetermined date and time. But unless Jim or planning board members have anything to say, I will ask if there's anyone in the public here wishing to comment on Ricky's signed permit and site plan application. Nothing? Okay. So, may I have a motion to continue this application to an undetermined date and time?
So may.
Second. Thank you, Michael and Edna. All those in favor? Close, extensions. Thank you very much. And the last, this is quite a Christmas gift here, if you might, on a Christmas gift. Yes, no, still, still, still. Come on, can I be hopeful in this season? The last public hearing this evening is the Ryan Cliff, and the last public hearing of the year, may I say? And there's something to celebrate. Last up is Ryan Cliff Hotel, Corriti, Ford Greenell Street, amended site plan and special use permit.
Sure, yeah, good sir. Good evening, everyone. Kyle Agar with Lovella. Also here tonight is Victoria Aldoro, the applicant's attorney. So, we were here last month to discuss Ryan Cliff Hotel. They proposed additional parking spaces, so just to do another quick summary of the project. The hotel currently has two existing parking spaces. So, there's, they're both ADA spaces. There's one here at the north, North Indian Greenell Street. Another space down here on the other side of the building. Both of those spaces are to leave. There's also this existing drop-off area that's essential used for loading and gas drop-off at the moment. The hotel currently has these spaces with the MTA. As you know, the MTA is looking to no longer lease out their spaces as they contemplate their own improvements in the area, or to the station, I should say. So, we've been tasked with providing additional on-street, or I should say, on-site parking for the hotel. If you go to the site. So, this is one of the existing spaces I talked about. We are proposing six additional spaces to the south of that existing space. We are keeping the northern space as is. And the reason for the two different ADA spaces is that they're, as you know, Greenell Street is quite steep. So, there's one ADA space that comes into the upper level of the hotel, and then there's also one that comes into the, to the lower level. We're also proposing the drop-off area, three spaces from the drop-off area. We're accomplishing that by extending, or connecting, I should say, the retaining wall from this stairwell to the existing retaining wall, essentially filling in this area in between, which allows some space for parallel parking space. So, we got some feedback at the last meeting and the sidewalk with some of the planning member, planning board members, and that drop-off area seems to be the focus of a lot of, you know, a closer look, essentially. So, we've, you know, there's concern with the angle of these two spaces and the proximity of the parallel space. So, just to reiterate some of the options from the board. You know, we did, we did it this way to get three parking spaces where currently there's zero, but realistically, you can fit two, two cars in there. They're not quite 18 by nine, but they're 17 and change by nine, essentially, if you come side by side. Basically, take these two angled spaces and just make them 90 degrees. There were some questions about whether you could do three spaces here with 90-degree angle parking based on the configuration, and there's just not enough width there for three. So, you would be looking at two, and both being compact. So, you know, we do think that the current configuration, if, we think, you know, given the constraints, given the, you know, parking situation where we're losing the empty parking, I think, you know, maximizing parking is pretty important. So, that's still what we're proposing to do and, you know, focusing our efforts on. I do want to make one suggestion here. I think, you know, I think the concern about the parallel parking is valid, and I think to make it a little, you know, more maneuverable, if we take this curb line here and we angle it out 45 degrees, that should help, you know, allow people to swing into this space a little better. But besides that, we would be looking, we'd be looking at two spaces instead of three. There was also, we just got a letter from the historic board. They would like to see, similar to the drop-off area, they would like to see some, something other than asphalt pavement. So, they'd like to see the pavers or a gravel that's, stabilized gravel. So, that's something we can, we'll talk to the applicant and we'll decide, you know, what they can do. There are some considerations on maintenance of the paver specifically. This site, you know, if you come down, you can see it right here, actually. If you come down to the parking for the MTA station, this is a, just a rock cliff. You know, so this, this is all sitting directly on rock. So, the pavers have some issues, essentially. So, in the winter specifically, you know, any water that perplecs into the pavers isn't going anywhere, and you're going to get some pretty significant heat in going on there. Pervious paver specifically, if you go with an pervious option, it doesn't quite have the same, same issues. So, we'll, we'll talk to them about that. Yeah, and I don't, I don't believe there was really anything else. Those are the main, the main items that were brought up since the last meeting. But any questions, you'd be happy to answer.
So, I raised a couple of comments in the last discussion, which was the parallel space. I have not controlled the design of that. The other ones, we're asking for a letter regarding continuous use of the hotel, something we discussed. We did get a letter from Victoria stating, you know, the continues has been based on research. I'd also asked for a letter from Bob Wyatt to make sure that what was proposed would be okay with him. And I think, generally speaking, it is. He is concerned about snow removal in winter. I did just ask that, you know, if these do go through, that the applicant be responsible for making sure that, you know, it snows properly and will not put in the street, that kind of thing. So, we did receive letters on both of those. The only other thing I saw, this is just a minor kind of administrative thing, is I know the client sheets have his name on them still, so it might be good to update those, so it's all consistent all the way through. So, I'm just kind of, I know, I know things have changed, but it's maybe to have it all consistent.
Sure.
So, otherwise, I can adjust everything I had.
Okay. Who made this site visit?
I did. Sean. The, we have no issue with the 90-degree spaces up the six, up the top. Most of our time is spent in a semicircle. Sean drove his large SUV, so we pulled into actually that space. The only way those will work is with a diagonal. It doesn't work in a 90-degree in that space. We did have a lot of concern about the parallel parking area. We felt that it would be awkward for someone to try to get into that space and possibly be jamming cars and just... One thing that we suggested was if they were straightening out the retaining wall, there is the possibility to make that another diagonal space for a compact car. But we didn't really think that jamming a parallel space in there would make a lot of sense. Just seemed like it was forcing an issue. His, Sean's car, while being large, was completely off the paved road, but as you see in the picture, it's, it's over the property line. So, if, I guess it comes down to if there's an issue with plowing, because it's off the road, but it's, is it really off the road? What would be the biggest question?
And just to address a couple of things, so we did reach out to Bob Wyatt, the, you know, the suburban tenant. You know, this is kind of pretty similar to some other businesses or residents. Driveway, essentially, where, you know, you might have, not necessarily long driveway, but any, anywhere where you have driveway, parking along the road. So, you know, he looked at the plan. He had no issue with the plowing. As Jim said, the, the applicant will be responsible for removing snow from their, their parking spaces. And his only concern was, you know, that's, they just can't take that snow and put it into Greenell Street. So, you know, of course, they will, you know, they'll be responsible for removing and keeping it on-site instead of just pushing it into the road. He also looked at the site distance, make sure that cars pulling out into Greenell were going to be, you know, safe maneuvers. He thought the site distance was acceptable. And yet, to go back to the parallel space, you can see here... So, this here is the location of the, the new portion of the retaining wall. So, that's where it connects to the existing wall, which is this arc. And then, the stairwell has a, a G-ball next to it here. They could put another angled space here, but you are looking at, you know, it's not the street is at this configuration, and then, you know, the wall is at an angle to that. So, you are looking, you would, A, you would lose your sidewalk in front. So, you would have to walk within Greenell to get to, you know, depending which direction you're going, either up the road or down the road, and it would be compact. So, you would, you know, you would have about, a lot of promise and dimension that we can't get, but it looks like it'd be about 18 feet on the angle, which means it'd be closer to 14, 15 on this side. You know, you'd probably put some wheel stops in there just because, you know, you don't want to be right up against that retaining wall fencing. So, you're, you're looking at a very compact space. Yes, yeah. But we're looking at whatever more face is more appropriate, we'd certainly consider.
I feel like that on the parallel space now, that you would be getting out your industry and getting out your car, as opposed to the diagonal ones where you're getting out and walking to the, to the sidewalk, so.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, so you'd be getting, if you're the driver, at least you'd be getting out and, yeah, walking up this way or walking back this way, either the street or up to the sidewalk.
I was going to ask, you know, the site visitor, we received a report from the CIV as well as, did we? So, we have no report from the CIV. Is anybody in policy? Or the WAC or the project? And there, are there any comments? There were?
There was.
There was? Do you want to read it, Gretchen?
Not really, but I can see it.
Oh, that's small, four, uh, four, no, what are we looking at? Probably said Ford Greenell Street.
It said Ford Greenell on that.
The other impact comment, I don't think, they did have a second comment.
It's a bugger, but...
About the length of the parking spaces.
So, maybe we need a more? Okay. Which it should be, it's marked around the, it says Ford Greenell Street, but it's actually for...
Do not have comments from the WAC or the CIV. Which I think would be important to follow up on. I, I, I know that doesn't have a comment, and I think Michael was...
I have a question.
Okay.
Given the size of your many vehicles that you're driving, yeah? Chevy Suburbans, Navi Navigators, or Expeditions, and these are two large, very large vehicles. You know, a whole bunch of people parking even in that upper area there. Then they'll open their doors about who the vehicle next to them. They're going to be able to get in and out. Those are the type of vehicles that are parked up inside this town.
I mean, that, by 18, is a standard parking space.
Yeah, so the only, the only spaces are, are the town required size. The only compact space we're potentially talking about is this, if we decide to take the parallel space and go angled here, that would not be 80 feet wide. But as far as 9 feet width, you know, you can't just open your, your door willy-nilly, but it, it does give you enough, even the Suburbans are not much wider than any other, any other vehicle. So, you do need to fit into garages and parking spaces susceptible in the other store. So, yes, we are, you know, full, full width per town over here. But if you had all our justy beefs there, yes, you're going to have short distances.
Or if you had a couple of subtrucks, which is not going to be wide, it was going to, we have to do a first side pickup, and then I can do.
Here are roughly, you're with 10, and we have spaces here. And are there other spaces that the Ryan Cliff Hotel has?
Yeah, I can address that. So, currently, the Ryan Cliff has leased with Amtrak for 20 spaces, so currently operating with 20. Part of that, it's, it's actually a license agreement, not a, it's been continuously renewed since this hotel was refurbished and reestablished, although it started out 66 spaces. It's been reduced to 20 spaces, but it does get renewed. Don't have a reason to believe it won't be renewed anytime soon, although, you know, Amtrak has been filming. One of the requirements of this license agreement is that the hotel continue to pursue onsite parking solutions. So... So we are here in part because Amtrak is requiring us to come here in order to keep our license active with them. As I said, we reduced it from sixty-six to twenty, but twenty are available now. I also just want to point out that in Rhine Cliff's panel, the planning board does have the ability to waive parking requirements altogether. And in fact, when Kip's Tavern was opened recently, they didn't provide any off-street parking spaces. So everyone that's involved in that, parking for these businesses is difficult, that if you are willing to block, eventually you'll find a space. And so we don't, we don't see it as a huge issue, that there's fewer than sixty-six spaces.
Sort of than sixty-six?
Yeah, that was the original equivalent.
But, but now it would be thirty and a half, right? Assuming you get the twenty.
Right, assuming you can keep the twenty, and then you have the...
Maybe, right.
Grounds and spaces.
And, and so how many spaces might be needed, assuming some large gathering? What's been the experience in the past?
So, I mean, there's nine hotel rooms. So we're trying to accommodate off-street parking for the hotel patrons so that they have an overnight place to park. Restaurant patrons, they come and go at different times, and so...
And what is the capacity of the restaurant?
I believe it's a hundred and thirty-nine seats.
A hundred and thirty-nine seats?
It's either a hundred and thirty-seven or thirty-nine.
And so how would that kind of slot in cars, basically?
I mean, I don't, I don't know how to translate these to cars, but...
Am I correct that the business model, I think even one point said one twenty-five or one thirty, somewhere in that general area, is the capacity of the dining room?
Right.
And it has been used in the past for not just a restaurant, but for an event, like if we're at weddings and...
Correct, it's been used, you know, as a special event venue or restaurant. But the seats are the max for both floors and patio. What's permitted is the... So I would have to do a calculation if you're asking, if you're asking how many parking spaces could be required under the current code?
Well, to put it another way, in the past during operations, have the sixty parking spaces been used?
So I'm just returning, so I can't, I can't answer that question. As you know, the hotel, the former operator, Mr. Chapman, is no longer the operator, and they're looking for another full-time operator. So I, I can't speak directly to that business portion of it because my client, the net owner, has not had an issue with parking spaces or leasing it. There have been private events, and at the time, parking at the train station has been insufficient and adequate. People have been able to find spaces, especially at night.
All right, but you used to have sixty. Now maybe you'll be twenty plus ten in this, so you're losing thirty spaces. And presumably...
Well, there's still spaces. There's still going to be available spaces on the street. And we did account of how many are available on the street, as well as at the train station. I mean, again, just approved Kip's Tavern with no parking spaces.
Is there a possibility, is there a possibility you would lose the twenty spaces of the Amtrak if you didn't put these ten spaces in?
So we, I mean, we are hoping to get more spaces from Amtrak.
When is the lease renewable?
Or whatever you're...
It's, right now, we've been doing it quarterly.
When is it renewable?
April third. So we're just renewing for the next year.
That's a short lease.
Well, we've been having to check in with them on our progress. So, yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no guarantees, but the applicant has been working with them to, you know, to try and obtain more parking spaces. They're just unsure of what their right, with the pandemic, they were unsure of what their ridership needs to be, how it's changed with all the people moving up there, and what would come with the renovation. So they don't want to commit to anything.
This is the Amtrak, Victoria?
It is Amtrak.
Okay, so...
It was formerly CSX, CSX has entered into a...
Have your conversations... I touched on this three-year renovation and what, you know, I mean, isn't it conceivable that the disruption that's gonna take place there, that they're gonna want those twenty parking spaces back?
It is conceivable, whether it's on a temporary basis or a permanent basis, I'm not sure, which again is part of the reason why it appeared.
Right, but then on the timeline that they're putting out there, this is a three-year construction project. Okay.
Yes, a couple of questions. Well, first of all, does Rhine Cliff have any requirements for a hotel around a certain number of parking spaces per room? Or is it not a business requirement?
So the town has off-street parking loading standards, and I would love to just ask, the requirement for a deli or a restaurant is twelve spaces per thousand square feet of net usable area. I don't know what the size of the net usable area is, but I'm guessing it's over a thousand. But that, that, that's twelve per thousand square feet of net usable area, plus any spaces required for the bank or the mannequins.
So what about the hotel? Does the hotel require like one per room or something? I have an...
We don't have a hotel per se.
But then a breakfast has to have one per room, that's what I was asking, too. But conceptually, at nine rooms without the hotel, that would mean that, you know, half of the spaces, if approved, are already taken, right? So we're really talking about half of that designated to the hotel, to the restaurant. Given that the space has been up for lease with different uses based on whoever obtains the property moving forward, you know, one of my questions would be, would the number of spaces then needed have to change again based on the new use of a new operator? Right? In which case, there's still a lot of variables for change here. What if someone wanted to out, you know, build up more rooms? They found it more profitable to have turnover versus more, you know, restaurant? So that's one of these.
I mean, that's definitely true if an operator comes in and wants to turn it all into hotel. We would be back before you, but I think that would actually be a reduction in parking if you're going one per room versus, I mean, it might end up being a net loss, so it's not necessarily...
Or vice versa, or if they want to use the event spaces, you know. So I just think there's variables here that are very unclear about the future, is my point, I think.
But, I mean, right now, we're here based on what it is, which is the restaurant slash event space in its current iteration.
Which on any given day could require parking for your one thirty-five, let's say, plus nine? So you're really, on a given day, looking to be able to peak capacity. You're looking to park a hundred and fifty people, not necessarily vehicles, but you can be...
Sure.
To add capacity if you were taking a hundred and fifty.
Right. My other question, just, I've, I've been in this space recently, and the retaining wall, just from relaying it to clients and taking pictures of it, it feels like it was not in good shape.
It, it's definitely not, which is part of the reason this portion would be rebuilt.
The, the old portion? Plus an addition of the new?
Well, part of, part of the old portion would be rebuilt as part of this project. It, it does look like it's...
It does look like it could support several big cars up there, so it's fine. Okay, and then my last sort of comment or statement, while I understand the shame that it caused to take away the grassy area, and I, maybe that's not ideal for neighbors or any of it, so just a thought that came to mind is, you know, as you get to that grassy area and the utility area, has any of that area been in the conversation around how to deal with this?
Well, I mean, originally, we had an even more robust plan to move parking up further past the utility area. We knew that wouldn't be welcome, after some discussions, so it's been reduced. I actually wanted to point out, in the segue, historically, where we're proposing parking was a shed and garage for carriages. So, you know, the view now is something that people like to look at historically, if available, and this is where they were parking for the hotel. That's in the registered listing. But yeah, I mean, the site's very constrained between having, because there's no sewer, the wastewater treatment plant takes up a significant portion of the property. You know, we're working with lots of animals and looking for your, but... Other planning differences?
Just to add real quick, a question about the lawn area itself. You know, beyond the impacts it would have to the view, based on the size and shape of this overall area between Grinnell and Cliff here, you know, even to try and maximize this parking, you're looking at a small driveway essentially with parking on both sides. And by the time you get the access drive in there, you're only looking at a net gain of just a couple of spaces, which, you know, I think the trade-off there is, is probably not worth it. Conceding away a lot of neighbor's opinions.
Okay, public. I invite you to come to my apartment, introduce yourself, you offer your comments.
Yes, hi, I'm Richard Popesczynski, I'm with Rhine Cliff. And I was calling for this letter, you, you received the letter?
Yes.
Yeah, and we tried to deliver it at the front door, but it was closed, so I'm gonna go ahead. So I'm sure you've all, I'm sure you've all read that letter, right?
Absolutely.
First of all, I, I don't think Amtrak would ever give up spaces. They have to, I can't really see that happening. And, you know, we're talking about two feet here and a few things there. It's really a bigger picture than that, I think. Some things in the letter that they wrote to you, that they wrote to the members of the planning board, addressed to you and Melanie. Specifically, I don't understand this, sorry. Specifically, the zoning board of appeals granted the Rhine Cliff Hotel an area variance to reduce the onsite parking spaces from sixty-six required under the then-existing zoning law to between two and twenty-two spaces onsite based on the proposed operations and existence of off-street parking. I don't know how it got from sixty-six to two or twenty-two. I mean, you don't have to reply, I guess, some of these things. And one thing, I think, I think the Kip's Tavern did mention that they had off-street parking. They had two in the back, and they have a building, a commercial building up the street, number ten, Schatzel, that supplied four spaces there that we've talked about before. They're saying that the proposed parking will result in a minor alteration to the existing hamlet streetscape. It's not minor. It's a hun, it's three hundred and seventeen feet from Schatzel Avenue to the end of the hotel parking, to the end of the hotel parking. We have the hotel. On the far side, we have the garbage, and next to the garbage, we have a sewer plant. And next to the sewer plant, we have buried propane tanks. And now, the only open space that we have proposing a parking lot for nine spaces. I mean, right on the sign that they have for lease, they say a hundred and fifty-seat venue. When James Chapman was running that place, that event venue, he, he would have a hundred and eighty, two hundred people. He would do three, three weddings on the weekend. The parking up along Grinnell Street went all the way up two blocks. The Morton Library, I mean, you couldn't find space anywhere. Another thing about it is sometimes they brought in buses, because it's an event place. During the summer, the buses would run for four or five hours, the fumes. I mean, it's right in a residential area, between the sound of the bus, between the, between the fumes. It's, it's really, besides these little minor things that we're talking about, I think we have to think of that big picture. And that big picture is, you know, I think we were all enamored with James Chapman. He was a great guy, we really loved it, he was gonna fix up the Dumpy Hotel. And they did a great job, you know, it was terrific. But I think the plan is too big for Rhine. It's just, with the events that they have, they're not holding back. I mean, they got a central sewer, they got a package plant, and as I said before, the only open space we have is here, right now. And to put parking there on Grinnell Street would be a crazy thing, I think. So I really think we have to step back. I spoke to Neil Bender and the entourage four or five years ago. He was asking me what I thought about this. And I said, I think you should take the event space out, put up three, four, five, six rooms, extra rooms. So instead of a nine-room hotel, you'll have fourteen or fifteen-room hotel. And you have a small restaurant pub down below. I think that would alleviate this huge problem that we have with the big events and that just overwhelms the hamlet, the little hamlet. So, and I think these rhododendrons that we're thinking about planting on one side must be sheltered from the prevailing winds, particularly in winter, as rhododendrons are highly prone to wind. I think there's not a place in Rhine Cliff that's more windy than that right there. So I think, besides not suitable for the rhododendrons, it's really not suitable for parking. And I really think, again, we should take a look at that bigger picture. Thank you.
Other members in the panel?
Hey, everybody, I'm Eva Gilbert, I also live in Rhine Cliff. And I have some questions and concerns about this plan, similar to what Mr. Popesczynski was relating to. But one just question is, is that line, this line? Is that the current curb of Grinnell Street?
No, no.
It's not?
Okay, the area ends before the parking, I mean, the riding board.
What is that line?
This is the property.
Okay, so it's, it's already beyond its property line, it's a public space. So a few things, you know, unfortunately, these nine spaces just don't solve the problem that this property has with parking. What they do do is they create a massive eyesore in Rhine Cliff. It's probably the most scenic residential area that is protected as a historic area. That view shed is extremely important, not just to people who live in Rhine Cliff, but if you come and walk there, you will see so many people driving into Rhine Cliff for the purpose of walking these beautiful streets and seeing these beautiful views. Again, you have nine cars being on that, there's nothing, there was no other parking on that side of the river, anywhere, all up Grinnell, so you get to any car on the south, there's one car. But, and then the other thing is, you know, we have children who, it's one of the, it is a pedestrian area, you know? We can walk around, and we can do that, because it's relatively safe. But coming up there, you know, kids walking up that street, it's very steep with those sightlines, with a bunch of cars there, just gives me chills, thinking about people pulling out into the street there. I would suggest that, you know, it sounds like the owner is like, waive this. These nine parking areas don't get us where we need to go as a business, and they don't do anything for Rhine Cliff. You know, so maybe there's a way to waive this parking requirement and not have to figure out a way to operate, you know, having parking up and down. Rhine Cliff isn't good, but they're gonna need to, you know, maybe... Rhine Cliff isn't good, but they're going to need to, you know, maybe we don't approve an event space anymore and have it be more hotel rooms, which I think we could accommodate with the existing lease they have with Amtrak. You know, whatever that is, if it's 14, it's currently nine rooms, six rooms, nine rooms. In addition, all whatever that would be, five rooms, I don't know. That seems like that would make more sense. I think this will be a really regrettable plan that will, as I think, leave all kind of flat, not solve the ultimate question of how they ever can park for 130, you know, accommodate an event with, you know, over 130 people. So, thank you. Yeah.
Hi, my name's John LeVelle, and I am a longtime resident of Rhine Cliff and a five-year resident of Grinnell Street. So I want to echo a number of things that my neighbors have said, and also something that Ms. Barry commented on, which is that this hotel, the retaining wall is the very beginning of the state, of, there's massive disrepair throughout this hotel. And I think that we are putting the parking way, way, way before this being a functional business. That no one could come in and rent these hotel rooms. The pieces of the building are literally falling off. It is not ready to be turned into a hotel or a restaurant at this time, to my eyes. So I feel like we are solving a problem, we're trying to solve for a problem, we have a solution for a problem that isn't the correct problem. At point, what Avery and Richard both said, if this is a hotel, an event space, a restaurant, whatever, the hamlet of Rhine Cliff cannot, is already strained in terms of parking. Obviously, I take Amtrak frequently. I'm fortunate enough to be able to walk to the train station because I don't have to deal with parking. Parking is a real challenge in Rhine Cliff, and I can't see Amtrak giving more spaces up. The spaces that were previously leased to the hotel, which has not been operational for many years, are currently being used by commuters every single day. So I'm sure that they can be, you know, if that lease does hold, I'm sure that those spaces can be designated as being for the hotel again. And obviously, a lot of events happen in the night or in the weekends when presumably there's less commuter traffic. So, I have a suggestion. I'm not a hotel operator, but I've been at many hotels in small densely populated areas where the parking happens off-site. There is valet service where the people come up to the hotel, they get out of their car, someone takes the cars and puts them wherever they can find a place to park the cars. Because Rhine Cliff is never going to be able to accommodate 150 cars, 66 cars, even 22 cars. So I really feel like the parking needs to be thought of in a bigger picture, more creative way. And I know Mr. Bender has acquired a lot of properties all over the place, so maybe there's another property that he can lease to the hotel in order to park all of these cars. And then, at point what my neighbors have all said, that is a beautiful view shed. It is, it is a place where people come to walk, it's a place where people come to watch the fireworks, it's a place where people come to watch the boats. It's a public place, it is not a public place, I realize that, but the view is for the public. And I think we should preserve it. I know we talked quite a bit, I've heard a lot of discussion about the two feet here, three feet there in this area. And obviously, that's a really tight area. I can't imagine paying to park three cars there. But I really am concerned, more specifically, about the nine cars or seven cars or whatever it is up the street. This is an extremely steep street, and when you come at it from Schatzel, there is zero visibility. If you are coming from Schatzel to go up Grinnell, which I do every single day, if there's a car coming down, you cannot pass one another. You cannot pass one another in this area, let alone if nine additional cars are parked there well over the property line that belongs to this business. So I really feel like we need to get creative. This is a, this is a very densely populated area. We cannot accommodate all of these cars. I think we have to get creative as a community. And I would ask Mr. Bender and his people to get creative about how to solve this. Obviously, I would like nothing more to have a functional hotel, restaurant, business in the hamlet. It's an eyesore right now. I would love to see it fully functional. But I don't think that this is the solution to getting it functional. Thank you.
Hello, also Rhine Cliff resident, my name is Martin. I don't have much more to add to what Jen, Richard, and A U go ahead and complete said. I just think it's aesthetically, it's an aberration in the hamlet. What's being proposed here, it'd be a real shame if this was something that was going to happen. I think it's extremely dangerous. Average pickup truck, I think it's about 20 feet long. As Jen was saying, it's impossible to pass on this already. I can't imagine what it would be like if you had trucks parked there, or even nostalgia CDs. The view is magnificent. This would absolutely ruin it. As much, I'd love to see a hotel being functional here. This is not the way to go about it. Obviously, it seems that there's not a business that actually wants this place at the moment. So we're kind of dealing with the high debt estimate anyway. So we don't even know if this would solve the problem that the hotel needs to solve. This seems like something that would be a shame to approve. Thank you.
Hi, this is my first planning board meeting. I'm really happy to be here. I'm Kate, and I live in Rhine Cliff also, and I feel really proud to be here with a really wonderful group of people here who, I think, I moved from Rhine Cliff in the summer of 2017, and I brought my son here with us tonight, who's seven now. He was two at the time when I moved to Rhine Cliff, and we were kind of like, just, there were a few other, there were some teenagers were getting ready to go off into teenage land, and just a few children in the hamlet. Now there are a dozen or more. It's a community that in the last few years has become really full of children, which is, I think, in terms of the history of Rhine Cliff, where there are lots of people and families who have been there for generations. That's sort of like a new, I think there's like a new energy around that, people who are really raising their children there. And this hill is like where all of the kids have learned to scoop and bike and do all these things that you have to call out after your kid, like, please wait, 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 you know? And I think adding this piece here that just adds a level of congestion when already, I think, there's a vibrant WhatsApp group within the hamlet about what to do and how to address ongoing concern about the increased traffic with the train, which just, what happens is that it brings people in in a commuter headspace where people are flying in and ready to go kind of thing. And I think that adding another element where people are coming into the hamlet in vacation mind, as they should be, as Jen said, this is a really exciting, like, beautiful place where people should be able to visit. But in the sort of dense and newly forming family culture that's happening in Rhine Cliff, increased big vehicles that can't see over the front of their cars, and there's also a lot of children, and in a vacation mindset, just to me, brings a level of anxiety and discomfort with what that street would become. And it has also, we've shared so many community gatherings and space and walks along that way. So here with the next generation of Rhine Cliff tonight to propose this, Viha Medley.
So, yeah, you know, I think you've heard that we want something there. You know, we'd love a hotel there. We'd love a restaurant there. What's being proposed, I know we're just talking about parking right now, but that's the next step. But, you know, we would, it's just out of scale, I think, for what we're trying to do, and that parking is in the wrong spot. Just one other thing, on this application for site plan and review and approval, it says big of occupancy and it says continuous. Does that mean that it was, it was a continuing operating hotel from 2006?
Correct.
It has not been. It's been closed for
Five years.
I was going to be kind and say three to four, but I was, okay, I'll say four to five. So just so we know, there's no grandfather here, there's no, they've been closed for four years.
Victoria, so I can give you guys some of that. But as I said, it did reopen after the pandemic. I could probably provide you with a hotel occupancy tax filings if you need with the county, showing that there's been ongoing activity, the filings do refer. So the use has been continuous. It's not been at the level it was previously. I think we're all very clear that the landowner does not want to operate this facility. They're trying very hard to find someone who wants to operate and should be operated with all the loving care that Mr. Chapman put into it. But this parking continues to be a form inside, or it continues to be a problem. It's a chicken and egg situation. Operators want to make sure that they have adequate parking to serve their customers and that they can run a hotel operation. And without having a parking plan to show them or some certainty about any number of spaces, it's very difficult to get someone to commit to come in and commit to a long-term lease. So if everyone in the hamlet is saying that they want to see a business thriving, a business in the business district, businesses have to be accommodated, and a business needs certain amenities in order to operate. So, it's a business district. The other thing I just want to point out is that from the perspective of a residential neighborhood, this is an ideal spot. If you look across from Grinnell, there's no residential properties immediately across from those parking spaces. The next one is at a higher elevation up, and you can look over it. And then everyone else goes at the top of the hill in the other part of the neighborhood. So no one's going to be directly peering down on the particular spaces.
Then in the sense that we're going to continue this cover of hearing. And I think, I think it would be helpful if you can produce something that's more specific as to the continuing use. I mean, I know, for example, that they had had pop-up dinners and other things like that. But I think it's fair for the public to understand how you're defining continuous use. And, you know, just a little bit of extra work on that would be good for the record, I think.
Sure, you can do that. In fact, I think Mr. Kobizanski went to one of the pop-up dinners. I'm sure I have photos.
Well, so, you know, I mean, I'm not here to debate what your definition of continuous use is versus Richard's or anybody else's, but certainly, he would agree that the public perception would be that it has been largely closed.
Sure, right. I mean, there hasn't been an operator like Mr. Chapman since
Well, you haven't been able to walk in the door and sit down and eat.
Only, right, only at pop-ups, only at pop-ups and by invitation, which Some of them have been public, open to the public, but
There's only three of them.
Well, again, we're here, we're here to talk about the parking. We can provide that.
I think it's useful to have it in the records.
Very open about the fact that the use has been continuing, but at a much lower level because they are trying very hard to find a long-term operator.
Yeah, it would be helpful whatever you can produce.
Sure.
Anything else, Victor?
So I think it'd be helpful if you guys could summarize what you're looking for the applicant to provide for the next meeting. I will submit the photo of the shed, the application for the national register listing, but anything else, I'll start to write down.
Thank you.
This is just my, just from my understanding, through the, through the marketing efforts on the property, I think they also rent out two of the rooms on a weekly basis to repeat people that are there. And I don't know whether it fits in, but I just
That's just recently.
I may, perhaps. I just, that was brought to my attention, so.
Can I say one more?
And then I think has a comment.
Well, I have a comment, and then I have a question. The comment is that the parking proposal seems to be a Band-Aid on a much greater, I'm not going to call it a wound, but a much greater problem. The question that I have is, when we're looking at what kind of operation will in the future be there, does the planning board have any authority to limit, let us say, occupancy or limit the kinds of use? You know, so that it might be, for example, a hotel, but not an event space.
I would like to understand the planning board's authority in this area.
Basically, under the zoning law, the, a number of rooms permitted are based on acreage, for the most part. There are a number of rooms that could be permitted, but are not permitted as a right. Those are processed through the planning board, the planning board, let's say, let's say, assume that maybe 20 rooms could be allowed given acreage. But the planning board decides, well, only six can really be accommodated down this property. The planning board has to be, like I said, only six there.
Right, but the issue seems to be the events that have larger groups of people and larger
Well, right now, the only event center in the old area of the town around that is the ORP, which is where we use its power. So right now, legally, we know event centers outside of the ORP, event centers per se. Now, you can discuss hotels as being considered accessory use to a hotel. And you can make that argument, any event center. But once again, you can limit the size of it. The planning board doesn't have to allow it. The scene that's permitted them now, and this was done for much more parking was available, it was a very different world back then. The planning board might at some point want to look at whether or not that does need to be adjusted at some point. And another question quite frankly has popped into my mind, and I don't know the answer to this. This is something we have to ask our attorneys. Since, so these, half of those parking areas are being placed on public property in that it's beyond the property line for the hotel. Therefore, as far as, I don't know whether these are user roads in Rhine Cliff or what. But I'm very, I find it interesting that the property line is to the the side of the road, not down the center, when with a user road, you own the center of the road. But whatever the municipality is, it has the right to maintain a road for traffic, safety, things of that sort. But that's the only right to have. You own the middle and you pay taxes on it. I just find it very curious, the property line does not go to the middle of Grinnell, in their case, Grinnell, actually, public property, is it a user road? I don't know what the legal status of Grinnell is.
Right, and if you look at this drawing, the road narrows, you know, where the proposed parking
It does narrow down, yeah.
Which, you know, why would that be? It doesn't seem to make sense from a public point
I think most people in Rhine Cliff would agree that most of the property lines in Rhine Cliff So, this is another case of that. But I just find this very interesting. For example, if someone wanted to build something in there, let's say they're going to put their shed there to charge for, you know, trap parking, you know, like there's a CIA or something. Could you build it there off the property in what appears to be the right way to public property? Could you do that? And I don't think you could.
I don't think so. I think that the parking area is kind of like a driveway. And you can get John's opinion on this, but I think the parking area in this case would be essentially the same as a driveway. Where the road goes a certain distance, which you still have right away, if it goes even further, that technically is government property, whether it's a town or a village or DOT.
But if you park your car, I mean, from the driveway, is actually part of the right of way.
Yeah.
You have to pull it in from there. Is it actually considered obstructing public transportation and safety?
It, I think it partially depends on the location, but, you know, here in Rhine Cliff, first, we do have on-prep parking. So that's public parking on the street. It's in a similar vein. It just partly depends on the context, but if you want to get into the legal part of the discussion, I'll get to that.
I have no idea.
If I could get back to this issue of somehow limiting use so that you don't have huge groups of people. How would the planning board be involved in that, in other words? I don't think there's any kind of application for a board that has to do with the use of this hotel. The application is this parking application.
I think the question you've raised is, I think, and I think Richard and I were talking about, hotels are a special use permit. They're allowed here and they're allowed up on 9G, which is the only places that they're allowed in the town around, in the hamlet around. And if a special use permit is not actively pursued for more than one year, expires. So I think that's the question that Mr. Richard and I were raising. At some point, legally, if a special use permit expired and has the, in which case the operation, ongoing operation is being done without a permit to reestablish the use, they would have to come back to the planning board and apply for a special use permit and site plan.
Which authority in town would review that issue and make a decision?
Probably our attorneys to find out, with information provided, you know, by Victoria and everything. Then our firm's made to try and settle exactly that.
Would that be the zoning administrator along with the town attorney?
Well, probably, to work with that, yeah, because it has been a form violation if it turned out turned out that the permit actually had expired, then it would be a violation, you can continue to operate without...
Is that something that will be done?
That's, that's, that's what the discussion has been, that's why we asked Victoria for a copy of the letter stating continuous use, and Melody asked for more detail related to that continuous use, and we did get the letter, it will be in the file for this application, so I'm going to take a look at it. That is kind of the crux of a lot of the discussion that we've had for a long time, is continuous use.
But specifically, our zoning administrator and our attorney will, will look at that.
Well, as, John, John is aware that we've asked the question about continuous use, I have not had the ability to talk with him about it, but that, it's not only the use of it, it's the variances, and originally started the discussion because the variance is still with the plan, the variance is going to be used. If it hasn't been any continuous use, then essentially everything's out of the air.
And I think it will at some point boil down to the definition of continuous use.
Correct.
Which is for the attorneys.
Right.
Which is not an issue that we will debate as a planning...
Right, but it is being looked at.
It has been raised.
Yes, and that will be looked at. That is, obviously, it's very non-important, both for the, the operating of the hotel, as well as for the residents in Rhine Cliff, to get this resolved, and maybe other...
And I, and I can offer, and, you know, Victoria, I think will agree, that conversations about parking here precede, even you, Victoria.
They did, yes.
They, certainly, your predecessor, Mr. Rogenhause, was before us in pre-conference meetings on a number of occasions to discuss this very situation, and I will confirm that on many occasions, we did raise within the issue of identifying off-site parking and the need to not only consider parking for larger events, but also for staff, because that issue has not been raised here, but certainly, this is fully operational, as a, if a wedding's going on, you can expect a number of employees to have to get here to work as well, the chefs, the people waiting, the housekeepers, I don't know what that would amount to, but probably more than the parking spaces that are available. So I can only assure the public that we have been aware of this situation, and at all, every occasion we've had to raise these issues, we have, and Victoria's nodding, it's a bony issue, and we all recognize it.
Probably, there's not, I mean, even other, there's nowhere to park, I mean, the landowner enclosed for other properties, businesses are in the trees and all, and other properties are, they're getting...
Well, I'm just saying, it's not the first time we've heard this suggestion made.
Well, there's one other little problem too, because Victoria knows very well, we've discussed this, parking is not a community use item, so...
Right.
Yeah, they can, they cannot, even a parking lot, just to have to use it. In fact, parking is always accessory to another principal use, it is not a, it's a time of finding a car. That further makes it difficult, yeah, it makes it difficult.
It has the same owner, it has to be obviously the owner.
Yes, it's accessory to the use item.
Have we, um...
Have we, what is the water sufficient?
So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I am curious about, has there been a complaint with the zoning legislature, or someone, because generally...
I have not received any complaints at this point, but I think partially it's because the use has been so protracted that, that I don't think that it's raised, the uses that have come to that point yet. There were discussions back when they invited some of the large events there, that some people considered about noise and things of that sort, but that predates, you know, this would then be purchasing property, predates, you know, your involvement with the event. Since then, I'm not aware, and, former complaints being made to the zoning enforcement office in the last couple of years.
Just, just an observation, and I know it's been brought up by many people about taking a serious look at the, at the best use of this building. I, I, and I know I've heard, not just from you but from others, that one of the reasons that it has not yet gone into a management company to run it as a, as a restaurant is because of the parking problem, that many people recognize the beauty of the location, access to the train, people coming up, what a great place to have a wedding, what a great place to, to have an event, whether it's a birthday party or whatever, that is certainly a given, but it just may not work. And even if you found somebody that takes it on, what is the possibility or probability of long-term success? Because if people can't get there and can't park, you know, it's a business question, it's not mine to solve, it's not the planning board's to solve, but, you know, it's an observation that I would make, and so I hope that the owners are looking at all the possible opportunities for the best and highest use of this building. There is, Victoria, we'll, we'll talk with you about what additional information we think would be useful, I have taken each of this to tonight, but I think you have a good sense of some of the things that people want to see. And so, I presume you want to come back next month?
What did you say, the date was of the meeting? Seventeen?
It's your call.
Yes, yes.
All right, could, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until January 17th, that's 15, can I have a second?
Second, please.
Almost in favor?
I, I...
Opposed, extensions. Thank you, everyone, we appreciate the comments and your interest. Before we close, I just want to take the opportunity to give that to all my colleagues on the planning work, it's been a busy year, it's likely to be a busy year in the next year as well, but I appreciate your hard work and your site visits and your attention to detail, and wish everybody the best of holidays, and a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year. Bye, I'm Melissa.